Hey Mel, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Ready? You ready?
I call to order the May 20th, 2019 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You got it, baby.
Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers? Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here, thank you. I need, um, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting, May 15th, 2019, and the special meeting, May 15th, 2019.
So, second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry, minutes are approved. Ms. Mitchell, please present the first presentation.
Yes, so I'm gonna move down to the floor because we have a presentation. It is an update to the strategic plan, um, the work that we've done thus far, and we have a whole entourage of people who have worked on it, will be joining me down at the podium. Okay, so this morning, we're going to present our work thus far on the strategic plan. And as we begin our presentation, um, I felt it was important to really lay out a lot of the groundwork that started last school year and has continued this year that will better position us to be able to launch a strategic plan in August.
One slide. That's a short presentation.
Yes. It's coming. At your, uh, table, so you will see a brochure that outlines the major components of the strategic plan. There we go.
Could you, could you raise your microphone just a little bit?
Is that better?
Hopefully.
Okay. Okay, last year, we started a matrix management model to make the district appear smaller to our schools and have teams, dedicated teams, to really focus on the operational components of our schools, so that our principals and teachers could really focus on instruction. So I wanted to, to bring that back to everyone's memory. We also really, um, enhanced and expanded the quality improvement work that we're doing at Children's Hospital. It's expanded beyond academics and has gone into the operations component of the district, as well as expanding across the districts as it relates to instruction. Um, we're collecting run charts, um, academically, but also in the operations to be able to really monitor, um, our improvement or lack of improvement. The quality improvement is all about learning, and so this is an example of a run chart that Sarah Trimble Oliver had to demonstrate her work. The idea is to get below the red line, so she was trying to drive down the amount of wait time of teachers on the phone trying to get help as it relates to technology. And you can see that she put a lot of different interventions in place to drive it down further and further, and so we're really excited about this work. This is a, an example of just one of the run charts we've been working with. Also, we've been putting into place process maps with swim lanes. So this one is actually one for the budget process, but we felt it was really important to lay out processes because many times, we had processes, but they weren't documented. And we weren't always necessarily paying attention to all the different players who intersected with the process, and so we have process maps with swim lanes to lay the foundation for our work. We have our whole system measures where we're looking at some very specific areas in academics, as well as, um, employee engagement and talent development, as well as operationally. Each department also outlined its core services, so that we could be really clear in terms of what does each department really do, um, and which, uh, board, uh, policies actually, um, support that department's work. In thinking about the board policies and as board policies are updated, we also decided to create procedures, and so we put our procedures in a specific template, um, that we're using, and all procedures are dropped into the same template aligned to board policies. So as new policies are adopted and as policies are adjusted, uh, then we make those revisions, and we're going to be able to produce a document at the beginning of the school year that outlines the board policies along with the, the procedures and processes. As we began our work related to the budget, we really looked at a mission margin matrix in terms of identifying those things that are high mission but low cost, and those things that are low mission, high cost, and how we could be able to, um, stop doing some things to reallocate funds to support those things that are truly high mission. We then looked at the board's priorities and established the goals for next year for each department, along with the budget lines to support it, and then the strategies and the measures, and so everything is on one document for each of our departments. And then we were laying this out on a commitment delivery document that says, here are the core services that each department provides, here are the strategies that they're going to use, red, yellow, green on a monthly basis, and the way that a person or a department receives additional funding is through, um, actually being green on all of their, um, commitments. Areas that are red and yellow strategies, and those are perfect opportunities for, um, the continuous improvement model. So that's an introduction to our presentation. Before we can launch a strategic plan, we have to really line up processes within our district and ensure that we're being efficient, efficient and effective with everything that we do, so that we're really well positioned to then launch a strategic plan. So that's the introduction to our work as it relates to the strategic plan.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I am happy to be back with you today to do, um, some updates on the strategic plan process, and we actually have some design team members here that are gonna help me actually present this information, since they did a lot of the hard work. Um, so I just wanted, you know, to share that at Engage to Learn, our whole goal is to really help neighborhood public school be the first choice for every family. We really like to partner with public schools, um, and some guiding principles behind our design model for strategic planning is that we want it to be student-focused. So throughout our entire process, we wanna make sure that students are first. How are we gonna do things that impact kids? Not just, how are we gonna do things that are a little bit easier for us, or maybe, you know, doesn't have as much legwork on our end? Um, we want it to be community-based. So as we went through this process, we had several different types of members on our design team, such as staff members, community members, business leaders, even students, uh, teachers. We wanna make sure that this process is aligned and integrated, so that it's not a completely separate plan, it's actually the plan that is aligned to board priorities and actually helps drive the district. We use design thinking, which really, uh, allows us to think with the end in mind, and really then back up our thought process to how do we actually make that a reality? And then, we wanna make sure that it's actionable, so that it's not a plan that just sits on a shelf and collects dust, we wanna make sure that this plan actually, um, gets put in motion to help drive the district. And so, um, our strategic plan process, um, really helps, uh, detail things out to a very granular level, so that, um, the district can move forward. So Lauren is gonna help provide an engagement update for us this morning.
Thanks, Mitzi, and good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. So some of this, you, you already know, we have thirty incredibly dedicated, uh, over thirty people who've been committed. Someone counted up over thirty hours of time committed to the Strategic Engagement and Planning Committee over the last year, and we're really grateful, uh, for their support. Um, and of course, we heard from people in all of our sixty-five school communities, our fifty-two neighborhoods, and over seventy-five civic and business organizations. These are the focus groups that we've led throughout the, throughout this whole year in the different communities, and even if they were identified to one community or another, we, we drew from other neighborhoods for these. These are the civic and business organizations who gave input into our strategic plan, and we are really, really grateful for their support, um, in this effort, because many of them gave us other things to think about than might have been on our initial radar. And then this is a really important group of people here. This is everyone who participated in that design team, so who came together for full whole-day sessions to support the work that we're doing, including principals, our teacher cabinet, strategic partners, uh, we had students, uh, our Business Advisory Council, and of course, many members of the CPS staff, and our board as well. So we're really grateful for everyone's, uh, participation, support, and input that they gave, because I think you'll see that really reflected in the documents we're gonna review this morning. These are a few other of the opportunities that we had on recent engagement, and the engagement doesn't stop today, we'll continue, I believe our next step committee meeting is Tuesday, um, and we'll continue meeting with our subcommittees and community councils throughout the summer.
And you all have a brochure, um, that was laid at your seat, so that you can follow along with us as we begin to share some of these deliverables. One of the things that, that we really looked at was, um, considering the end in mind, and really thinking about what are our highest hopes for kids in Cincinnati Public Schools? How, what's our desired future, and then how do we get there, right? So it's, sometimes it's really easy to dream really big, but we also wanna think about what's our strategic plan that helps us arrive at those highest hopes? And so as we begin, we're going to have Paul come share our cultural tenets.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We care, we collaborate, we commit to success, and we continuously improve. We changed the terminology a little bit, cuz we added "we," um, because that's really what this is about, it's about "we," moving this work forward. We've made such great strides with these cultural tendencies that we developed almost four years ago, but they've really taken root here over the last year and a half, uh, in collaboration with the entire leadership team and the talent development team and the Department of Human Resources. So I normally don't read, but I think this is really important, that we hammer home the changes we've made. We care by creating communities of kindness to support the whole child's academic, social, emotional growth based on trust, respect, and all relationships. We collaborate as educational innovators who inspire integrity and great, create safe, experiential education environments for all. We continuously improve to support our growth and student achievement through better systems, student-centered decision-making, safety, security, and engagement with our students, staff, families, and community. And lastly, we commit to success by creating opportunities for staff to develop in their careers, for all of our students to create their futures and pursue their passions, enrolled in higher education, enlisted in the military, and ultimately employed in their chosen pathway. So, through this work, we decided we need to develop a call to action. And our call to action is, all Cincinnati Public School students are empowered through student voice, student-centered decision-making, and meaningful learning experiences that prepare them to be community and world influencers.
So one, one thing that we, um, decided to talk about were what were skills that students needed today to prepare them for an uncertain future? There's lots of, um, employment opportunities or college opportunities that we can, you know, we already kind of have an idea, and start to prepare them with academic skills, um, with social and emotional skills, but there are some employment opportunities and different careers and majors that we don't even know exist yet by the time our kindergartners exit our schools. And so we wanted to think about what are those skills that are gonna make students be the candidate of choice, not one of the candidates available for a position? And so Jordan is going to speak to the learner profile.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
You're right, sorry, and you do need glasses. It just happened to me about a year ago, so I'm trying to get used to it. All right, so I am Jordan Vogel, I'm from the Cincinnati Chamber. Uh, I lead all of the talent work at the Chamber. Um, just a quick overview, the Chamber has, oops, I touched something. Uh, Chamber has three core focuses, basically government affair and policy work, talent, expanding and diversifying the talent base, and then the third piece is kind of cheerleading all the cool things that are going on to make sure all roads lead to talent. So that middle pillar is what I focus on, uh, and, uh, we are heavily engaged already with CPS. Um, I'm engaged in two ways, one is I'm, uh, a member of the Business Advisory Council, um, but also, uh, with the CPS team, with Brittany and Travis and Philip, uh, we've been working on work-based learning. So this is the employment E, and this is where the kids are going two days a week, high school seniors, into the world of work, um, with a holy grail metric that we've identified of a job being offered and a job being accepted. So... One of the interesting things that we've discovered, the Chamber, in our work, and, bear in mind, we have nearly four thousand members, and it's not just businesses, right? It's government, it's higher ed, it's, um, not-for-profits, uh, runs the full gamut, is the skills, the hard skills are immensely important, but as Mitzi already pointed out, uh, we don't know what they'll be even three years from now, right? So they're changing very, very rapidly, but here's what's not changing, and here's what's an absolute necessity, and it's up on the screen. And we've surveyed all of our members, and soft skills is, is a term that's used, life skills is also a term that's used, this is wherein lies the rub, this is where we're gonna win with our kids. So confidence is the first thing that we look for in a learner. Uh, the belief in self to overcome obstacles, communication skills to demonstrate empathy, connect with the audience, and exhibit knowledge. Adaptability, utilizing multiple methods to achieve the same goal while embracing change and demonstrating resilience. This one is a big one, across the board, intellectual curiosity, experience is satisfaction, the learner's experience is satisfaction in discovery while acting as a self-starter and desiring self-improvement. Critical thinking skills to solve problems, take initiative, and exhibit ownership. Integrity, to accept responsibility and commit to his or her personal word, and demonstrate truth and honor even when no one is looking. Academic competence, to understand literacy, comprehend numeracy, comprehend numeracy, and utilize technology to amplify learning. And finally, collaboration skills to understand cross-cultural context, know when and how to contribute, and contribute to a shared outcome. This is an area that's near and dear to our hearts, because it's, it's coming up more and more, as mentioned with our employers, is that the skills are not that hard to train up on. Um, there's apprenticeship programs, there's, uh, you know, further education, and ideally, they're going through that, uh, as, as they enter their, their journey i- in the workplace, we're all continuously learning, but it's these soft or life skills that are critical. I think we move on? Okay.
And just as we be, you know, brainstormed and really discussed and came to agreement on skills that learners really need to be successful, we did the same thing with educators. So Ms. Laura is going to share that with us.
Greetings, Board members.
Hello.
My name is Laura Sebastian, and I am, um, an intervention specialist at Hughes High School for grades eleven and twelve. I do the inclusion, and I'm also the department chair over there. Um, just a little bit else about me, I'm an adjunct professor at Cincinnati Christian University in my spare time from teaching, and, um, I teach courses basically that focus on best practices for teaching students with learning disabilities, or all sorts of disabilities. Um, and one thing that I'm most ecstatic about is tonight, fifteen out of fifteen of my students on my caseload are graduating, um, at UC's Fifth Third Arena, so I'm very excited about that. And that's tonight, so we got a busy day ahead of us, but as a member of the strategic planning team, uh, design team, I participated in the development of our goals and strategies, and I'm gonna focus on the educated, educator profile. Um, to create the educator profile, we considered some of these, um, five different aspects, writing the profile in present tense, um, conveying the traits, characteristics, and skills that are necessaries for teachers to realize the call to action and facilitate the learner skills, um, setting expectations for students and staff for what learners need to be doing every day, and, uh, considering core values of the organization, learner skills, mindsets, and the different skillsets needed in the current educational contents. And finally, um, this is something that we, we'd considered being used for recruiting, interview questions, goal-setting, professional development, and different coaching plans, and so on and so forth. So we have, um, ten different attributes that we're gonna touch on here from the educator profile. The educator has, um, integrity to do the right thing when no one is looking, and always be honest, a passion for learning, and is a curious learner, committed to lifelong learning, has high expectations that are clearly defined, and set a high standard of excellence, collaboration skills that contribute to the value of the group to achieve shared goals, effective communication that is clear, concise, and also has the ability to listen intently, content expertise and continuously participates in professional learning, uh, cultural competence, uh, encourages diversity, and understands cross-cultural context, which I find invaluable, side note. Urgency for the mission, is dedicated to the mission and understands his or her role and impact on the overall mission, has a lot of compassion, empathy, and listens to understand, and also an inspiration to encourage others to reach their goals, and uses knowledge and expertise to motivate others. So those ten different attributes, um, are the types of skills, talents, aptitudes, and attitudes that, uh, the goal is to help everyone in the learning profession ensure their students are successful, and those ten things are an essential part of recruiting and retaining a strong teaching core here at CPS. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So we took a look at the board priorities that you all had established and developed goals. Um, goals are bo- bold resolutions that dedicate the organization's resources and energies toward continuous creation of systems to achieve the extraordinary as expressed in the call to action and learner outcomes. And as we begin to look at these, Jordan is going to do a, a quick overview of those five goals, and then we're gonna lead into, um, Ms. Mitchell, who's going to take a look at goals and strategies together. So the goals are kind of the overarching idea, and then strategies are more specific details to ensure that we're, the milestones to actually achieve the goal. So Jordan?
All right, I again. So these are the goals, uh, the first being student, student-centric decision-making. We will ensure students are at the center of all decision-making to create equitable educational opportunities and experiences. Health and safety. We will commit to putting the safety, physical, social, and emotional health of our students, staff, and partners at the forefront of everything we do. Community engagement. We will build relationships with students, families, partners, and community stakeholders to positively impact student outcomes. Systems. We will design data-informed, customer-focused processes that create efficient and effective systems. And finally, growth. We will deliver exceptional educational experiences that make CPS the destination of choice for families and students, reflecting the diversity of our communities. And if you'll indulge me for a quick moment, this, I swear to you, and pardon the image, but it happened this morning in the shower, so here's what I was thinking about the process, and I think that would be interesting. So I went through this process for three days, um, again, because the Chamber's invested, uh, in, uh, the next, uh, generation of workforce, uh, this was very important to me, so I did dedicate that time, and it, it dawned on me this morning that the process felt a lot like, um, the forging of steel, or iron, if you will. When you think about that process, this was painful, and Mitzi was amazing, but she put us through some serious rigor, and it was like, you know, being purified, melted down, shaped, quenched, rinse and repeat, right? I mean, it, it was really intense. So the goals are solid, but it was the process to get here that was really impressive, a- and it left me with a feeling, um, of what this staff and the admin are capable of. I got to, um, spend a lot of time with CPS folks, and I have to say, um, I'm, I'm a passionate evangelist because of what I saw from the transparency to the spirit of collaboration, open-mindedness, willingness to learn from each other, uh, and of course, that passion is, is just, um, palpable. So I wanted to share that with you as somebody from the business community, thank you.
So I'm not gonna read through all of the strategies, um, for you. Um, they are also within the brochure, and so this is the first time that the Board has had the opportunity to see the strategies. You saw, uh, the goals in our previous board meetings, um, but this is the first time that you've seen the strategies. And so our design team worked to outline strategies for each one of the goal areas, and so this is an area that we will welcome some feedback from the Board, so you can see the different strategies here. In addition, you will notice that we went back to the Board's five original priorities. There are an additional two that the design team added that we decided to fold into other areas. We didn't wanna lose those, but we also wanted to make sure that we were, um, providing what the Board asked for. So student outcomes is one that we have folded into student's, um, centric decision-making, and then employee engagement and experience is another one, um, that we decided to dovetail into another area. But you can see the goal areas, and then the strategies. One of our next big steps before Mitzi comes up is for us to continue to work on identifying what are the measures that will say we are, we are successful on these goals, and lay those measures out over the next three years. And so that's a major part of our work, and it leads into next steps.
So as we went through that really quickly, I feel like it, it looks like it was like, oh, we just went through and whipped that out really easily, but as Jordan mentioned, um, there was some blood, sweat, and tears that went into all of that work, um, but the design team is really proud of the deliverables as they came out. So some, some next steps, as Laura mentioned, was really to take those strategies for every single goal, and really plop them out on a timeline over three years, so that there's not a huge tax on time, talent, or resources, um, to ensure that we can do things successfully, um, going with that. So once, um, we, we take a look at all of the deliverables, my team is really pulling all of that together into the fifteen-page strategic plan, um, that is scheduled to be, uh, completed by the end of June. Um, so each goal will have a team lead assigned to it, um, and action plans will really help identify what are the specific granular details of each strategy that's gonna help us be successful with that goal. Um, so there will be work teams that will be taking a look at those really, really specific details. Um, as Laura mentioned, there, we really began to take a look at what are the components of each goal, and what are the metrics to ensure that we've actually made progress and achieved that goal? That will be focused into a dashboard and scorecard. And then in August, there will be a launch or rollout of the strategic plan with several- And then in August, there will be a launch or rollout of the strategic plan with several different groups, and there'll be a monthly review with the PLT, and then also a monthly presentation to the board as an update as well. So now I'll open it up for questions.
Do board members have questions or comments? Ms. Powers?
Good morning. As a participant on both sides of the staff committee, I would just like to commend the superintendent, her team, and all of the partners, and all of the engaged, learned people in the district's intentional inclusiveness of partners and teachers and community members and being a part of the staff committee and helping to create this design. This was a lot of work, a lot of collaboration, and I just want to congratulate you on the outcome.
Mr. Messer?
Yes, thank you for that update. So I think it's excellent work, and what I see a lot in here is the how, how we're going to approach things, how we're going to show up. And I think what will be crucial when we get to kind of the rollout is the what. Because one beautiful thing about a strategic plan is it says, this is current state, here's future state, and here's how many more seats we're going to need over this amount of time, and here's how we're going to go about doing that, and here are the dollars that will be associated with that, so that then we'll look to taxpayers, we'll look to the private fundraising that we talked about in the past. But I think the how is crucial. How you operate every day is so important, but then getting to the specifics of what does our physical plant look like, what does our workforce look like, and all of those specifics, so that as we go up to the community, we say, here's the vision, here's what we see this district being in the near future, but I still think we have to give the glimpse into, if we stay on this trajectory, in 10 years, we could look like this. So that's why we need to make some of the financial decisions, or have levies, or to have whatever, or think differently about our financial strategies as we go into the next couple after the one we just recently decided on. So I think that what, the specifics in that, will be a great add to this. And as far as the how, I think it's kind of in there, but not as deliberate as perhaps maybe we could, as being one of the largest employers in the region, to say, I think it's crucial in today's world to say, we're going to have an engaged workforce. And, you know, maybe one of the culture is, we are engaged. Well, what does that mean? How do you know that you're engaged? Well, that then drives all the other behaviors of having a formal engagement program. And it's not just teachers, although, you know, I do care about making sure that our teachers are engaged and have the tools and resources to do their job and that type of thing, but I want to know that the person that is serving our children in the morning after they've had a horrible, you know, experience or whatever, that that person is engaged to like make that impact, and we've heard those stories. But how do we create a culture that no matter who touches our students as they come through, they get that experience that comes from having a really engaged workforce? As we look to kind of the tenets of what it said about the students, one thing that I've been thinking a whole lot about since we heard from our Woodford students through some of my school visits are, you want to make sure your kids are successful in life? Give them some of the basic life skills, like balancing a checkbook, learning how to pay bills, understanding how to do a credit application, or the negative impacts of not managing your credit or whatever. And so I don't know if there's something in there that could be said to say that we want to prepare our children for future success in life, and we're going to cover off on some of these basic things that will help just level the playing field that maybe children in other environments might have. And then as far as the educator, I loved how you had those tenets of this is what good looks like. And my question is, and I don't know enough about this, but it feels like maybe our coaching and development opportunities may not be as regular and often and as rich as they could be. So what would be different about that if we're going to have these laid out to say, these are, this is what good looks like? In my workplace, it's a mandatory, you get one full coach plan every quarter, and it's got specific action items from go to here to here to here to here versus more of an annual or a biannual. And then, you know, and I think that, you talked on the scorecard, I think that was such a great add to this, that if we are able to see a dashboard that the staff looks like, that the staff looks at, the community can look at, anybody can just see this dashboard, I think that's a really great add that you've put in here and can really help us see us move forward as a district. So thank you all for the work.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you, and thank everyone for all the work. It's impressive to have done this this quickly, I think. I have some suggestions and some reservations, and some issues, if I could. And this is, is this a prototype, or is it just to kind of give us a visual of what it might look like? I would like to see the community emphasized more in a strategic plan. I mean, we spend a lot of columns here on the internal people, the teachers and the kids, and certainly that is doing the work, but for a strategic plan, you've got to inspire the community, not just inspire the folks that are already here. I mean, to keep that kind of in mind. And this will sound like I'm trying to make the board be more important than it is, but we're the community, be it as it may, this fearsome seven up here. We will need to see the board's vision and mission in this. I don't see it anywhere. I mean, there's not a new vision, and there's not a new mission. We're starting with the one we've had, and this is what I said before. And those are good, they're great, it's got that culture of excellence thing in it, it's got, you know, what we're, how we're thinking. Ryan mentioned, Mr. Messer mentioned the what and the how. I'm a little disappointed that I don't see that big why that the staff came up with about public education. This, we do this because this is public education's responsibility. I mean, that's a...
Yes, so I apologize. There are four major areas that were not included in this presentation.
Okay.
The vision, the mission, the equity statement, and then the rallying cry.
Great. And that is my next comment was the equity. I didn't see any equity anywhere, and that's been the clarion call for this board for several years. I mean, I like that we have, that you have included the IM CPS, the we thing, and since Kathy Ingram's not on the board, I'll use a Wyoming example, because every time I would ever use Wyoming, Kathy'd get all over me. So since she's not here, of course, she may be watching. The Wyoming way is what was indoctrinated to every student and every teacher, and there wasn't a different way for teachers than there was for students. I mean, it was the Wyoming way, and which meant that everybody, and I was just at a one school function, and somebody mentioned that, that they, oh, it was over at Riverview. One of the staff members mentioned the, how kids were correcting each other, and they said, it's the Riverview way. You don't say bad things, or... I just think it'd be great if we could merge this wonderful work you all have done over a few years now on IM CPS for staff, and because it's fabulous work. I think that, I think that can also pertain to children. I mean, that's, and that's that culture that you are, you know, you started at the central office and been working through that, that thing, that, just those words are good, but the we, to Paul's point, should be more than the grownups. But you mentioned equity, that's great. Vision, mission, you talked about, great. And Mitzi won't believe I'm going to say this, because she's listened to me a few times, but I think it'd be great. It's the Holy Trinity, if you will, both in faith and in set design, and in also political ads. Never say more than three things, meaning if, the strategies, if we could...
Reduce them?
Get the Holy, yes.
We'd be happy to.
I mean, it's just three words, you know, Father, Son, Holy Ghost, and then the triangle in set designs, the apex, if you will. Nobody reads past number three. It's as simple as that. So I mean, those are things, but I want to see the why. The other, the other one thing, and this is specific to the board, and it might just be specific to me, I think the goals are great, but I do think that your goals for community engagement and growth may not have been inclusive enough of the big things that we have to do, that were in the first thing that we came up with. For example, growth, and it's too long, but it shows where the board's been. The Board of Education is committed to being intentional and deliberate in its growth strategies, ensuring that its growth is implemented with an eye toward equity and integration, all while paying special attention to managing the district's assets and keeping an eye on community development. Remember, we were hot to trot about that. Enrollment diversification, demographic trends, neighborhood identity, and expanding its portfolio of choices. I think that is more than us just offering a good product, because it talks about what we have to be concerned about, and I was, I think that was good board work, and the other one was the community engagement one. I'd like you to look at that again, because I think the original board priority was really good. The CPS Board of Education, through existing district and community infrastructure and new communication strategies, is committed to creating environments, and again, too long, and processes in which meaningful community engagement can occur, and therefore authentically influence its decision-making. I mean, I think that that might evolve into a strategy, but those two, the other three, I think, thank you for making them more succinct and meaningful and powerful, but those two, I would just say, if you'd look back on those to see if there's some aspects that we could pick up. But yeah, if you're good on the why and the vision and the mission and the equity piece, and emphasizing the community, not just folks that work here and learn here, and some definition of culture of excellence would be helpful.
Mr. Davis?
I want to thank particularly Member Messer and Member Bolton for their words. I'm a bit of a system skeptic, so while I want to offer gratitude and encouragement, I have just a couple of concerns. If I were a student, I would think that our call to action is bogus. For one, as a student, I don't even get to vote on my LSDMC. But you want to make this student-centric, this is all about the student. I don't know. I think you have to balance that with reality and desire. So your school board may need to reconsider the student having a vote.
Yes.
Vote without voice is a big concern for me. I'm wondering if there was involvement of dropouts, charter families, those that do not drink the CPS Kool-Aid. A lot of the things that I hear, it makes everything's like so good, and it's going to be so good, and things are not that great. And I would hope that in our strategic planning, we'd be able to address that straight forward and directly. Things are not that great. I know we're the greatest worst district in the world. Good, I'm happy about it. I am as big a cheerleader as any of us. I want this to be successful, but in our strategic plan, I think we have to be clear in addressing our concerns, and I really don't feel that in our current, where we're at currently. Jordan, the chief evangelist, man, we need you. I was really excited about the Chamber's participation and our opportunity to build with outside organizations like the Chamber. I would have been as ecstatic if we would have had maybe more of a teacher presence, and maybe more of a student presence, and maybe more of a community presence inside of our design team, but I think that's an error on our part, and just in determining what the design team was going to look like. And then a lot of times, you just can't go backwards, but I wanted to make that statement. My final comment is really a reiteration of what Member Bolton said about the why, and I did hear you Superintendent Mitchell, that that has not been included, so we're looking forward to seeing it being included, and what Member Messer said about the what and the how. And I know we're at a point in time, so this, for me, this is not final, but as we are at a point in time and we continue to grow, I think that what and that how is very important for us to be able to start hearing in our presentations. Again, I want to be clear, I'm very grateful and encouraging us to continue along these lines. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Other board member comments? I have one comment, I guess that'll be the final comment. I want to thank the whole team as well. I really congratulate you on even bringing this to us so far. And I know just based on the comments and the feedback that board members are giving, it is kind of hard to see the big picture or the broader picture when you're kind of doing it in steps. So I'm not as critical about that, because I think to get the full picture, we'll have to see the full plan. So I think it's coming. I do agree with Mr. Davis's statement about the fact that the board, and we have to take responsibility for that, we're the ones that made the decision about not having student voice on LSDMCs. And so in the, I remember in the beginning of the year when we were starting this, when we had our, what day was it, January 12th or something, when we had our retreat, even the struggle that we had reaching our, coming to agreement about our priorities. So this hasn't been a clean process necessarily at all levels, so there's a lot of thought that needs to go in on the board's part to be able to own some of this and start looking at some of the things that we can impact down the road. I am very pleased about the cultural tenets. I think, my opinion is that they deliver a strong message. Might there be something missing? Yes, I mean, I hear people commenting about that, but I was very impressed when I look at that. I mean, it gives us a really good focus, which is what vision statements are supposed to do, and I felt pretty good about that. And then finally, I do agree that somehow we need to integrate the IM CPS part of it, which is also strong, and it's successful, and so we certainly want to strengthen it in that way. But again, I congratulate everybody who's been involved with this. It's nice to kind of see the sort of outline of what it's going to look like. And again, you know, when we get to the big picture, I think, I really do believe that a lot of what the board members are asking for would potentially be in that big picture.
Absolutely. And we will definitely bring back to you way before August, an update on all the things that you mentioned. So I truly appreciate your feedback. The feedback that you've given the team and myself all along the way has helped to make it even better and better, and so I look forward to bringing back to you some additional changes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your feedback, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you to Engage to Learn and all the community people who were involved. Okay. Mrs. Wagner, please present the five-year forecast.
Yes, well, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm a little bit shorter than everybody else. So I'm here today to present to you the May update of the five-year forecast, and just to start off very briefly to educate the public and just remind our board members that the five-year forecast is required by the Ohio Department of Education from all 610 school districts in the state of Ohio, and it's for the purpose of... 610 school districts in the state of Ohio, and it's for the purpose of monitoring solvency across the state. We have to use a standard format that's created by the Ohio Department of Education. We operate on a cash basis, and the format includes three years of actuals and five years of estimated revenues and expenditures. And then we file twice per year, typically in October and May, but this year in 2019, we'll be filing in November instead. So we have factors that influence the forecast. You know, we're at the end of the state budget, and you've been hearing a lot of talk in the press about the Cut Patterson Fair Funding Formula and the governor's budget, which will have a positive impact on CPS, we think, depending on how it gets through the House and Senate. The state foundation formula has been proposed to be put on hold, so we're still operating under the current formula, which has some challenges for the district in that we're considered a wealthy district, because it's, the measure is relative across the state in comparison. So one district in northern Ohio can get very poor because of some economic action that would make us look very rich with absolutely no changes to our economy at all. It also has a 5% cap on our revenue growth, so if we grow too fast in enrollment, it kind of hurts us, because we won't get the revenue that goes along with that growth. And then, of course, we still have pass-through funding, which is where the students in charter schools, private parochial vouchers, participate in our funded ADM, or Average Daily Membership, and then that tuition is deducted even before we see the first dime. And throughout the forecast and projecting out into the future, we typically use anywhere from 3% to 5% inflation rates, depending on the category. So the big picture in May is that we are, as compared to what we filed in October, that we're going to finish in a more positive cash balance than we anticipated, which is good news, about $26 million. And the reason for that are three things. We didn't collect as much property tax as we anticipated throughout this year, mostly because of commercial values declining. Our state aid was up by $4.3 million because of our revenue or enrollment growth and in improved data reporting. And then we had some other revenues, the first being the FC pilot payment, $9.4 million is supposed to be paid to us on June 1st, so this is the first time you're seeing it in the forecast. And then we received a $5 million Medicaid reimbursement. We typically don't forecast for Medicaid reimbursement, because they are so difficult to anticipate when they're going to happen, how big they're going to be, so that it's always a very nice blessing to us. Question?
I'd miss the reason that you think we have 3 million less in property taxes.
We collected 3 million less than we had forecasted.
And was, did you state why or what your thoughts might be?
Mostly, in my preliminary estimates, because commercial values are declining, or they declined in the last rates report, mostly because of demolished properties, abated properties, and Board of Revision requirement, or reevaluations.
So you, there's, you said there's like maybe three reasons?
Mm-hmm, three major reasons, right. Residential values went up and public utility went up, but we're also, if you recall, the property tax reimbursement for the public utility is declining, is being phased out, and so that's another reason why values are down, or collections are down.
And you mentioned abatement and?
Demolished properties, so once a property gets demolished, the value goes down, gets eliminated.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So on the forecasted expenditure side, so I talked about the revenue, and now we're talking about the expenditure side. The biggest impact on expenditures is on, we had paid a little bit less tuition than we'd anticipated. Students are choosing to return to the district, we've had some charter schools close, and then our professional services payments in transportation and contracted services are a little bit down than we'd originally budgeted for. We did a lot of analysis on that in our budget practice this year. In terms of, when we develop our budget, we have a lot of wonderful plans that we want to implement strategically, and then things happen, and we just don't, we can't, we don't have the opportunity to implement everything we want, so that's why we're underspending a little bit. So if you know me, I use a lot of pictures instead of data, but here's a picture of our forecasted revenues. The blue bars are the state foundation revenues, and as you can see, we're anticipating continued enrollment growth at 3%, barring anything that we come up with a strategic plan. So the strategic plan work is not reflected in this forecast, because we haven't finished the work yet. The very top values are the, I'm trying to show you the different levies that are up for renewal, and the red stars indicate when they're up for, when they, we finish collecting on that renewal, if it does not pass. So the first red star, which is a little bit misaligned, I worked on this at home, so when I transferred it to work, it misaligned a little bit, but the red star is the $65 million levy that we just adopted a resolution for, for 10 years, that we'll finish collecting halfway through 2021. So the revenue at the very top of the forecast will only show the revenue without the levy. At the very bottom of the forecast, this is a state requirement. If you have a renewal, you're not allowed to recclude it in the top portion of the revenues. So when you're looking at your big sheet up here, the lever renewals are at the very bottom in the cash section. And then the second, the $48 million levy, will expire in the following year. So on the other hand, here's our forecasted expenditures, just in total, as you can see, the curve is a little bit steeper. Typically in a forecast, when you're using inflation rates, if there's some kind of anomaly that happens, it tends to think the anomaly is going to continue to happen, but we are very stringent on focusing our budget to make sure that we are, stay within our cash limits, and we have the ability to control that growth. So this is a picture of the different parts of the expenditures, and I talk about this simply because our operating transfers are so large, and it makes everything else look smaller, but because we participate in the school-wide pool, we are allowed to co-mingle our general fund, our federal funds in the school budgets. It gives us greater control and efficiency on spending to meet that child's, those children's needs. But you can see that in the transfers out, which is the dark block at the top, how big it is compared to our salaries and personnel benefits, which are at the very bottom, the lighter blue and the orange. The pool, the transfer, there's three transfers that go out, the one being the pool, money that puts, gets put into the pool. The second is our fund, 34, our maintenance fund for buildings. We were required to put a half a mil value into the maintenance fund, so that we can maintain the beautiful billion-dollar buildings that we did in the facility master plan, that's $3.2 million every year. And then, of course, the general fund has to help pay for our debt service, which is about $16 million a year. So those three values represent that big blue block at the top. Let me just switch to the next slide here. So on the operating transfers, I just explained the first two. The general fund transfer into the school-wide pool represents 197 million, and that's about 96% of the pool itself. Title I is about $7 million transfer and represents about 3% of that pool, and then Title II A is about $600,000 for class size reduction. We hired teachers to help remove splits in our enrollment classrooms. In addition to that, the salaries and benefits of the pool represent about 95% of that whole pool value. So most of it's spent on teachers and peer professionals and support services. So finally, here's the impact of the cash of the May forecast. The lines at the top represent the revenue, and what I'm trying to show you here is what cash would happen with or without the renewals. So the gray line at the top is our expenditure line, the orange line that's second there is the levy, is the revenue with our renewal, and the blue line would represent if we didn't, we weren't successful in renewing our levies. And then the bottom two lines represent the impact of cash. So you can see where we're forecasting a positive cash flow through 2022 and dipping into the deficit in 2023. So every year, as we manage our budget and our spending and become more efficient with our budget and our spending, we're able to push that deficit off another year, which is good news. But then the yellow line at the bottom shows how devastating it would be if we were not successful in passing our renewals. So with that, I would like to open it up for questions.
Board members have questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Messer.
And this is just for me, for my education. You know, as this kind of looks like, kind of just steady growth, as you project out, and I've learned over my time so far of how you kind of create your formulas, and that kind of shows out. Will the five-year forecast ever include our capital expenditures or our, you know, if we say, strategic plan says we need 3,000 more seats by 20 whatever, and so will that then trigger this to say, put a spike in there, which is, how does that get figured in?
Yeah, so if we decided we had a strategy that was going to recruit 10,000 kids to the district, I'm going to use a big number so that it makes sense, then the revenues generation would have to go up. But because property taxes don't grow with enrollment, it stays with the property values. When you're in a growth cycle of enrollment, the per pupil for property taxes goes down per pupil. Does that make sense? So state revenues will grow, but the property values will stay flat, or property revenues will stay flat. But your expenses are going to go up, because you have to hire more teachers, you're going to need more supplies, more transportation, you know, everything. And so the expenditures are going to grow at a faster rate than your revenues, it'll drive a forecast, a cash deficit in the forecast. So that's one indication that you need to do something to generate more revenue. It would also be an indication that you might need to go find some more property. You would not see property capital expenditures in the general fund. We typically don't buy out of our cash general fund. We would more than likely put it into a permanent improvement fund, or as we, when we bought Mercy and renovated CANS, that debt went into our debt service fund. That's why our debt payments went up from last year to this year, because we're now paying on those, on that debt. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so, and I think it may be an interesting ad for the strategic plan, and I'm visual, so I'm trying to make this where I can describe what I'm seeing in my head, where it's almost like, here's our five-year forecast, as you're rolling this out, but then like an overlay, where it shows like, this is the incremental money that has to be identified, or, you know, so you see, like, you peel it back, and it's like, oh, it looks like a nice little study. Oh, yeah, it would just kind of grow. But the point you just made, I think, is critical, that bar any changes, our dollars don't increase, and then, you know, if we continue on the growth trajectory that we have with our students and other needs, et cetera, then you could show like this gap that would be like an uncolored box saying, we need to identify. So thank you for that clarification.
You're exactly right, and we're thinking along the same lines. We've actually formed a subcommittee of the STEP committee to do long-range financial planning. And so we started at first, you know, talking about the need for our renewal and what to do about that, and then we talked about the state funding formula and how that would impact our long-term financial plans. Having those things kind of set aside right now, because we're in kind of wait mode for those two things, we're focusing on two rather subcommittees of that committee, one that works on fundraising, future opportunities for revenues, and the other one that's working on financial messaging of our good stewardship and getting the word out. We're anxiously awaiting for the content of the strategic plan, so then we can go then apply it to our model. So that's a very good point, thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. This marks a year for me, because I remember my first school board meeting, and I was going, what the heck is a five-year forecast? And I spent many, many hours with you, and I kind of understand, so thank you. What are your greatest fears in regard to where we stand in regard to the forecast?
Great question. So I'd have to say that my greatest fear is that we would grow much faster than our legislators will allow us to grow and support us financially.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton.
I remain very, very, very concerned about the need for new money so quickly in our future, because I just don't think it's going to be there. And so when, and that's just me being very, very cautionary, I guess, very concerned. So it might behoove us to be thinking more along the line that that's not a given, and so how do the next three budgets or what have you, or the first half of this? And that also needs to be in our mind as we are looking at the strategic plan, because it's, you have this many renewals that must pass, you had a very historic new money with the preschool promise piece, and that 15 million dedicated, and that great initiative on our part, too, to expand. I just think with what's out there and the frequency of the renewals will hurt greatly our opportunity to actually have new money. So I mean, and this is when you have to start preparing for that.
That's exactly right, and that's one of the things that we talked about on that long-term financial planning group. We're trying to solicit experts in those fields for the long-range, you know, foundation, fundraising. And that's another reason why I was recommending to the board to go for longer levy cycles, because of the levy fatigue, both internally and externally, and all the competing levies that are out there. So yeah, total agreement.
And I think that's also one of the reasons, not only that the 10-year, which might be very difficult to get passed, too, but I think it has better chance. The other issue, though, is that that gave at least the impression that there was new money coming in, you know, from a standpoint of construction, district-wide and citywide, whereas at least with these renewals, we keep saying, this is not new money.
Correct, and so the public doesn't realize that we don't get, our revenue doesn't grow with inflation and economic growth. However, if we ever choose to go with a substitute continuing levy, we would be able to take advantage of new growth, new construction, and that value. So that would slow that need, the financial need, down.
Thank you.
Or encourage it. Thank you.
Mr. Morosky.
President Gents, thank you, Ms. Wagner. That was extremely helpful to see. So I'm curious, you noted that you sort of put the state funding formula piece on the shelf, and I understand why. And while I have political opinions, I'm curious what your professional opinion is regarding Cut Patterson and whether or not it's been, do you think, permanently derailed? Or is going to come back in another version, or?
Good question. Overall, I'm fairly supportive of the concept of Cut Patterson. It's very similar to the way we do our budgeting in the district, and so I really like the formula. My challenge has always been whether the state will fund it. And so when it first came out, there was a $150 million shortage in the governor's budget to support that, and whenever there's a shortage, you start scaling back. So who knows what they're going to cut out? I think in the end, that they will probably convert to something similar to Cut Patterson or use the foundation of it, but how they trim it and change it, it will be, remains to be seen. You know, I've been the treasurer for four years, and I've seen several different, and I've been with the district for almost 26 now, and I've seen a lot of funding formulas and the changes and how they happen at the last minute, and so it's hard to predict what's going to happen. I would love to see something of that nature come to the district, though.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Wagner. And just for the board to note, we will, we do have a vote today on this. Okay. Thank you, Melvin. Okay. Does anyone have any kudos? Ms. Bowers?
I have kudos from the third annual Chris Nams baseball softball event yesterday. It was a wonderful turnout for parents, nice competition with students. We went into overtime, oh, I'm sorry, we went into extra innings, getting my sports right. And it was an excellent game between, I think it was Central Office and staff. It was, it rained, but they pushed through it. No, well, we had one little incident, but other than that, it was a good turnout. So I want to commend all of the participants, congratulate all the students, coaches, Josh did great, we were on the news, I saw last night commemorating Gabrielle, identifying the field, her family was there and spoke. Gabrielle was very good.
Thank you. Who won?
Administration won!
Well, it was a mix, it was a mix, because we, one side didn't have enough, so it was kind of mixed up, so I had a hard time determining who was who.
Great.
It's very exclusive.
Okay.
It might make me pull out my old glove, batting ball next year.
Uh-oh.
Show you how it's really done.
Maybe a board versus staff.
Thank you. Who won?
Well, it was a mix. It was a mix, because we, one side didn't have enough. So it was kind of mixed up, so I had a hard time determining who was who.
Great. Okay.
It might make me pull out my old glove, bat and bomb next year.
Uh-oh.
To show you how it's really done.
Maybe a board versus staff. Uh-oh. Uh-oh, I think I'm in.
Okay. Any other kudos? My heart says yes, but my body says no. Any other kudos? Thank you. Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Thank you. We have several retirements from our certificated personnel. John M. Rowe, one of our teachers, and from civil service personnel, Christine Millen and Patricia Neil Miller. We thank them for their service to our children and congratulate them as they move along in their life goals.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we do not have any hearing of the public request. So we're just going to move on into our board matters discussion. And just to kind of put it in context, our last meeting, a couple meetings ago, we had a presentation around the tax abatement scenarios. And we said we would bring it back on May 20th. Today, it's not going to be a full-blown presentation, but Mr. Hoing is just going to update us on kind of where we are now in developing a framework for how we move forward with the tax abatement.
Thank you. We reached out at your request to the city last week to convene a meeting to start by making sure that our numbers are reconciled and that we can compare and contrast the numbers that were presented by the city manager and our own. So I reached out to the deputy solicitor, Luke Blocher, last week. And he got back to me, and we're eager to put a meeting together. He's going to send me a couple of dates, and then we'll compare calendars with the treasurer and myself and our outside legal help, and we'll get a meeting together. So that's the only update I have at this point.
Oh, okay. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, thank you for that update. The one question that I think is very basic, but I don't know that it's officially been answered, which is, has the city told us what their approval process is? Who owns the decision and how that will be approved through the city? And if not, then if we could formally ask that, my opinion is, we will spin and spin and spin, and the city will spin and spin. I think we need to know who's your team that we negotiate with, and then what's the approval? Because we've gotten, it's the city manager, we've gotten it's the council committees will approve and oversee that, which are the committees overseen by council member Sittenfeld and council member Mann. But I think if we could just say, hey, could you just send us an outline of, here's the approval process from the city standpoint and who's on the negotiating team, then we can provide that same thing, and I think it gets everybody set on the good tracks.
Let me comment on that, because I neglected to say how we even arrived. We did, right after that last meeting, we came to, Ms. Bolton as chair of finance, and myself came together with administration to really talk about the process. And I believe that was one of the items on the list of maybe two or three things that we said we were going to do. So, and I do recollect that, so I'm glad you raised it as a reminder. But I think, I do remember that, and we probably need to refer to our notes of that meeting to make sure that we're capturing everything. The whole intent of that meeting was to really kind of attest to where we are now, who was doing what internally. So we did work that out, work that through, and then we have to do the same thing for, with city council, with the city around that. So, okay. Any other questions, Ms. Bates?
Yes, I have a couple. First, today, it's my understanding that today at the council's budget and finance committee, Dehaney is going to defend the memo he sent to us. Which, we all saw that, right? That was pretty interesting. It was a little different than the five-year forecast that our treasurer gave today. But will we have somebody at that meeting to at least observe and have a presence? Not necessarily to testify, because we weren't invited to testify, and, you know. I think we deserve more than two minutes. But to at least see what is going on, you know, reactions, questions, you know, or if they do need technical assistance, that somebody from our administration would be there, you know, to answer questions.
Sure, yes.
Is that?
Yes, I'm certainly aware that city council is having that meeting. I don't know if we had planned to attend in person or to watch, but certainly we are watching that. If the direction is to attend in person, I'm glad to do that.
If the, if board members agree, I think it's a good idea to at least have a presence there.
When is that?
Today at 1:00.
Mr. Morosky? I'm not.
Yeah, I'm not finished, but.
Okay.
I agree with board member Bates. And I also, I think for no other reason, just to have, again, not to repeat everything you just said, but to have that presence, because, again, if we are to present, I think we deserve more than two minutes, to be perfectly frank. So I think to have somebody there is probably not a bad idea, assuming we're not taking anybody away from something that's crucially important in operations in the district. If somebody could attend at 1:00 PM, I think it's a good idea.
Or at least call Eric Kearney, or although Eric is advocating for his own position, I think he's kind of in a tough spot. Maybe George, if he's in town, today's Monday, he might be, you know. But anyway, if our governmental liaisons can, somebody from the administration. And I think more than just watching it on TV, because you get to watch, you know, the body language, the expressions, how it's being received by the council members, who has that puzzled look on their face that might need a little bit more, you know, information. So I think that's important. Secondly, we talked in, I think, our last meeting about having openly developed criteria brought to the board. So, you know, obviously, the negotiating team isn't going to be negotiating in public. That's, you know, that's not part of the process. But knowing what the criteria is for the negotiating team, I think, is important for the board to know and for the public to know what our priorities are. So when we can expect that to at least be presented or worked on publicly.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, well, I think we'll follow, internally, we'll follow up on these things. I do, I can tell you, we did have a pretty robust conversation in the meeting internally. And I believe we also talked a little bit about the criteria piece. But I think what we did is basically summarize what was going on internally and how we needed to reach out to the city as an initial step. So we realized that we have a process and a few more steps to do, so we'll get that done.
Right, but.
And the timeline.
The board needs to know that, too, when that work is.
Absolutely, I know. Yeah.
Is strained.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do. I have a couple things and a really short presentation to show you some of our students. But I wanted to just go ahead and acknowledge and send around to the board members the vision, mission, equity and excellence, education, components that we're thinking about regarding the rallying cry, as well as the culture of excellence in addition to the brand identity statement. So those were not included in the presentation that was given a couple moments ago. But I wanted to acknowledge the people who really did this hard work, and also to acknowledge the board's vision and mission, and so, as well as equity. So you have that. Rest assured that that will be included in the overall plan in its final stage.
All right.
Yes, sorry. So we try to work pretty fast. So now we just have a couple more things on the list in terms of your feedback. Wanta Hill students, I think someone is driving for me. Thank you. Wanta Hill students are vocabulary champions. So they placed second in the nation in a vocabulary bowl. They were first in the state of Ohio. Nearly 1.4 million students from 39,000 schools across the district, across the nation competed. And Wanta Hills came out to be second in the nation and first in Ohio. Other exciting news, the Zoo Academy seniors at Hughes were able to meet the National Geographic Fellow. So they were very excited to be able to meet her. So that's very exciting as well. This is a highlight of our valedictorian from Schroder High School. She was featured in The Inquirer, and here's her quote in The Inquirer. "Everyone in my class is extremely bright and smart and talented, and they are all going to do amazing things. I just want them to understand that they can have help all along the way, and they should also help themselves." So, very nice. You all may remember seeing her when she came down to be acknowledged as being the valedictorian for the school. Last but not least, we want to acknowledge many of our students who are taking part of or advantage of Project Connect and them graduating, which is significant. This is a screenshot of Destiny Lewis, who will be going to Miami on a full ride. And so it just highlights that we are taking care of all of this. And that completes my report.
Yeah, that was a great shot of her. Blue dress. Okay, is that your report, Superintendent? Okay, okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
No.
Is there a second? Discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, I need a motion for a 48-hour waiver to add action around the approval of the five-year forecast.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky? President Jones?
Aye. Okay. Report of the treasurer, Ms. Wagner?
My written report is submitted, and in addition to that, submitting the five-year forecast for approval.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
So move.
Second? Okay, discussion. Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky? President Jones?
Aye. Okay, now I need a motion to approve the May 2019 five-year forecast.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye, thank you. Inquiries and updates. Ms. Bates?
Yes, I will do this on behalf of the finance committee. In our committee meeting last Thursday, upon the advice of our governmental liaisons, our, the finance committee directed Lauren Warley to develop a written testimony for the House or Senate Education Committee in consideration of House Bill 166, highlighting key points that are part of our lobbying effort. I wanted to bring this to your attention. It's in draft form right now, but I don't believe we would have time as a board to approve this, because we would have to approve it right now. It has to be in this week, in testimony, this week or early next week, I believe. And when's our next meeting? It's not until June, right? Yeah. But the finance committee did direct the administration to draft a letter in our behalf. So it was approved by the finance committee. So I believe that would be fine to send that on behalf of the board. We can send you the highlights. We were pretty careful in what we were asking for. We didn't want a five-page letter, according to Ms. Bolton's holy trinity. You know, we do have a little bit more than three, but we did want to have a reasonable amount of asks. And we are supporting wraparound service funding, which is in 166, changes in the graduation requirements, changes in the report card, additional assistance for pupil transportation. And there's an inclusion regarding residential developer tax abatements. And that is a different bill, but there is, it would provide a tax break only for housing developers by freezing the taxable value of their property up to three years. And we would rather that be a local decision and that the city of Cincinnati have control of that. So in a nutshell, that's what we're proposing as written testimony to the Senate Committee. And we would be happy to send you the final draft once it's finalized.
Thank you. Any other inquiries or updates? Great, thanks. Any assignments? No assignments?
Two for two.
Wait, capital. Okay, alrighty. All right then, I need a motion to recess into executive session to consider purchase of property for public services and employment of a public employee or official.
So move.
Second? Ms. Wagner? Ms. Wagner? Is that a roll call or a voice vote?
Roll call.
Okay.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky? President Jones?
Aye. Okay, having no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned. I'm sorry, we're not adjourning, we're recessed. I have the parliamentarian next to me. She keeps me in check.